I've been informed that we have a quorum has been attained of 100 people. So, at this point, I would like to have the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. And here it is, right over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to ask Reverend Robert Hopakian to come up from the First Congregational Church to lead us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Honorable Selectmen, Town officials. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is democracy in action, and we appreciate you making the commitment to be here. There's plenty of places we could be tonight, right? But it's important that we're here, because this town is important. It's our life. Let us now ask God's blessing upon our gathering. Let us pray. Oh, loving God, we thank you for this time we come together, for this is where democracy lives. We appreciate the freedom that we have in this country, a freedom we understand was hard-won and hard-maintained. Lord, as we gather here tonight in the comfort of this room, in the peaceful atmosphere of this town, help us to always remember there are men and women who are even now in harm's way protecting our freedoms, and indeed, the freedom of the world. May your Spirit bless and keep them, their families, their loved ones, all of our veterans, and especially those who have given their lives so that we could remain free. And, Lord, we're very grateful to you for our rich heritage here, our 375th year of existence as a community. We are grateful for all who have come before us, for their faith and their devotion to freedom, to each other. May we reflect their qualities and their values as we continue our journey forward as a community united. We thank you and pray always in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Bob, would you like to give that question, please?
Madam Moderator, I move we allow the following non-resident individual's permission to speak if called upon during the October 27, 2014 special town meeting. Judith Pickett, Town Council; Deborah Egan, Town Administrator; Conservation Agent Brent Baselak; Fire Chief James Brodrick; Pamela Jacobson; Library Director; Coordinator of Health Services Frank Machiniani; Principal Assessor Sean McFadden; Building Inspector Ken Ward; Water Superintendent Mary Beth Weisner; Kurt Baker, Town Planner.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to give permission to the non-residents of the town departments, heads to speak, and they're seated over here on my left-hand side. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll proceed with the reading of the warrant. 754. Bob, do you want to start with that? The reading of the warrant, then I'll suspend it. Town of Raleigh, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, warrant for special town meeting, October 27, 2014. To the Constables of the Town of Raleigh and the County of Essex greetings, in the name of the commonwealth.
Madam Moderator. I move to suspend further reading of the October 27, 2014 special town meeting warrant, because present town meeting members have a copy of this warrant.
Second.
It's been moved in second to suspend the reading of the town warrant. I want to make sure, does everybody have a copy? If not, there are copies out on the check-in desk. All those in favor suspended the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. 755. Just would like to inform everybody that Article 1 is active at all times, Article 2, and we will start with the reading of Article 3.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to suspend in the town meeting the application of Section 19 and Section 20 of the town meeting bylaw pertaining to the reconsideration of all money articles. Such suspension intended for the purpose to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limits of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2, so-called, and to give blanket warning hereby that any money article may, at the end of the meeting and after all articles have been acted upon, be moved for reconsideration in order to balance the total level of funds raised and appropriated within the limitations of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any questions on this article? It's for reconsideration at the end of after all the articles. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cameras. 756. Tom, the gentleman just came in through the back door. Has it been checked in, please? Article 4.
Madam Moderator, Article 4, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be added to line 7, Selectmen's expense of Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 5, 2014, to pay for the expense occurred to hold the October 27, 2014 special town meeting for a total appropriation of $17,117.
Second.
Any questions on Article 4? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay. All those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 4 passes. 758. Article 5.
Madam Moderator, under Article 5, I move the town vote to indefinitely postpone Article number 5.
Second.
And the reason for that is, we have had a donor step forward and has donated the $1,900 that we need to bring the present elevator at the town hall up the code. And that person, or actually persons, is Yankee Pine, Lumber Company on Route 1. He felt that he wanted something, that he wanted to do something for the town, and he thought that would be a good thing to do. And on behalf of myself and my colleagues here at the table, we thank him very much. And I thank you folks for giving the approval by applauding him.
Okay, I guess Finance Committee, we don't need your recommendation on this. All those in favor of Article 5 being postponed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 5 passes. 759. Article 6.
Madam Moderator, Article 6, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be used by the Board of Library Trustees to test the library's sprinkler heads.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding Article 6? All those in favor of Article 6 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 6 passes. 8:00. Article 7.
Madam Moderator, Article 7, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $777 from line 154, Essex Regional Retirement of Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 5, 2014, to be used by the Board of Selectmen to pay the outstanding balance of vacation benefits to former Assistant Treasurer Collector Karen Summitt.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 7.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay, anybody want to? I will let everybody know that this is a nine-tenths vote. Are there any questions regarding this? Okay, all those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Article 7 passes. 801. Article 8.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $129 from line 109, sanitary health agent wages of Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 5, 2014, to line 110, health administrative assistant inspector wages of Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 5, 2014, for a total appropriation of $27,152.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 8.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article 8? All those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 8 passes unanimously. 801. Article 9.
Madam Moderator, Article 9, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,603 to be added to line 96, Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School of Article 5 of the annual town meeting of May 5, 2014, for a total appropriation of $60,507.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 9.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article 9? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 9 passes. 802. Article 10.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote and raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to line 117, Veterans Benefits of Article 5 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting, for a total appropriation of $55,000.
Second.
Okay, Article 10, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Just some background, with the war in Afghanistan winding down and additional veterans coming home, this money is needed for the Veterans Services, which are administered by the Essex Regional Veterans Services.
Are there any questions regarding Article 10? All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 10 passes. 803. Article 11.
Madam Moderator, Article 11, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,285 to be added to line 17, Reserve Fund of Article 5 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting, for a total appropriation of $58,285.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 11.
The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Do we need anything to be said on this gentleman? No. Okay, are there any questions regarding Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 11 passes. 804. Article 12.
Madam Moderator, under Article 12, I move the town vote to take the following actions. One, transfer and appropriate the sum of $29,000 from line 12, Collective Bargaining Reserve of Article 5 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting. Two, transfer and appropriate the sum of $29,866 from Article 5 of the May 5, 2014 special town meeting warrant. And, three, transfer and appropriate the sum of $12,000 from line 154, Essex Regional Retirement, for a total transfer and appropriation of $70,866 to line 60, Police Department Wages of Article 5 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting, for a total appropriation of $1,210,604, to fund the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and MassCops Local 150 effective July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2016.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 12.
The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 12 passes. Article 13.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote appropriate the refund of the purchase of the new ladder truck in the amount of $17,671.99, to be used by the treasurer to pay down the principal on the borrowing to the purchase of this truck. The Board of Selectmen wishes to apply the refund to the principal on the debt, thereby reducing the total amount borrowed, the funds purchased.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article 13? All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 13 passes.
Madam Moderator, first, I'd like to put out a special thanks to all the Raleigh River boaters that came out of hibernation this evening to help us reach our quorum. I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $25,000 from the stabilization fund to be used by the Hovermaster for the replacement of ramps, docks, and gangways at the Town Landing.
Has it been second? Finance Committee on Article 14.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Okay, would you like to give a little?
Yeah, just a quick explanation.
Is there a second?
With the help-
Yes, there is a second.
Very quick, because I know most of you want to get out of here as quickly as possible. With the help of many volunteers since 1979 that I've been Hovermaster, we have basically stitched the town docks back together each year, and we've finally reached the point where nails and screws really won't hold and sponges, and they're actually becoming quite dangerous and quite rickety. So, the time has come that we replace them. So, I will be putting this out to bid. These will be professionally-built docks that will meet all safety requirements and should last the town for many, many years to come. The Town Landing in Raleigh River is surely a treasure, and a secret one at that. Many around us don't know that it even exists, but it's one that many of the boaters in this town really enjoy. So, thank you for your vote. Any questions?
Would you believe, you can take over this job. Are there any questions regarding Article 14? All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 14 passes. 809. Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I make the motion, the town to vote and transfer and appropriate the sum of $245,000 from the Water Department Stabilization Fund to line 11, Maintenance Treatment Plant of the Water Department operating budget in Article 6 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting, operating budget as follows. $150,000 to cover electrical costs at the water treatment plant, $50,000 for the purchase of the water treatment chemicals, $21,000 for the purchase of pall filters for the water treatment plant, and $24,000 for the interim maintenance of the pall filters at the water treatment plant, for a total appropriation of $395,590.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 15.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article 15? Yes, come forward and please state your name and address, please. If anybody else wants to speak on any of these four or five articles that are left, please stand over on this side.
John Manning, Haverhill Street. I know it was controversial, the whole bond issue before, but I would just like to ask, with all due respect, is this a mistake, these annual, several questions. The $150,000 for electrical costs, is this a one-time fee or multiple? Or it's going to be multiple a year?
Oops.
It's per year? Okay, that's one. The purchase of water treatment chemicals, is that one-time or is that ongoing? Okay. And so, I guess the other question would be, was this missed in the initial estimates for the water treatment plant, to the point of almost a half a million dollars of expenses that just seem obvious? Or are these new and a surprise?
Madam-
Yes, go ahead.
Moderator, just as an explanation here, last year, when we put the budget together, or the fiscal team from the town, along with the Water Department, we had the use, at that time, of an interim water superintendent. In fact, it was the second interim water superintendent at the time. We really had no sure way of determining what the actual costs were going to be. So, the numbers in that budget that were done at the annual town meeting were guesstimates based on early estimates we had. Well, now with the new water superintendent and the plant's been online since April, we've been able to determine what the actual costs are, and that's what these numbers are here to fill in and make accurate the costs. In addition, we, for the first time in a couple of years, with the new water superintendent and the fiscal team and the Board of Selectmen, Water Commissioners all working together, this next budget for FY 16, which will be doing in April or May, should be quite relatively accurate on the numbers. So, with the new treatment plant, we were given all kinds of different estimates by Pall Corporation, Weston and Sampson, the interim superintendent, so they were kind of grasping at numbers, hoping that we'd get by for less rather than more, and the numbers didn't work out. So, that's why there was money in the budget being transferred from the reserve fund in anticipation that we might be needed for these kinds of operations.
One more question.
Jerome.
Thank you, that's really good information. One of my concerns is that we initially bonded the water treatment plant, and the next year, at town meeting, it came for another override. And I guess my only final question is, once you've determined these actual operating costs, will you be coming for a third override to fund the water treatment plant, or will this be raised from regular taxes?
No, the water treatment, the Water Department is an enterprise fund. It's paid entirely by the water rate payers. We've, we're not anticipating it this time, of course, you never know, but anymore, the bonds have been put out, the rates have been built in with the bond, and these costs should be built in without, hopefully, no change in the water rates.
Okay, anybody else regarding this? Okay. Article 15. All those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 15 passes. 814. Article 16 is in order.
I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $24,000 from line 4, overtime standby of the Water Department operating budget, as shown in Article 6 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting, to line 3, Water Department wages of the Water Department operating budget, as shown in Article 6 of the May 25, 2014 annual town meeting, for a total appropriation of $274,803, for the purpose of filling the existing vacant unfunded position of a labor treatment operator and to increase the hours of the part-time secondary operator.
Finance Committee on Article 16.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Go ahead.
Just as a brief explanation, once again, when we were putting everything together for the water treatment plant, there were a lot of real guesstimates put together with the best information we had, and it's turned out that we, Water Department had a position in the department that was unfunded because they weren't sure they were going to need it. But the situation has developed is, we need to put our, have one or two people up at the water treatment plant all the time, and we're short of people to run the distribution system, which is the pipe system and everything else that goes to your house and handle complaints and problems and issues. So, this money is to, being appropriated to hire another person for the Water Department, primarily to handle distribution system problems.
Are there any other questions? Any questions on Article 16? Nope. 16, sorry. We're moving so fast, I almost lost where we were. Okay, all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 16 passes. Article 17.
816.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $60,000 from the Water Department Stabilization Fund to line 8, Water Department Maintenance of the Water Department operating budget, as shown in Article 6 of the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting, for a total appropriation of $4,13,500, for the purpose of paving the parking lot area at the Water Department Administrative Building at 401 Central Street.
Second.
Finance Committee on-
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, just an explanation on this article. The Water Department driveway up there, I don't know how many people have ever gone in it, 401 Central Street, has been a disaster in terms of, it's all basically filled land. And there was also, a couple of three years back, there was a Conservation Commission issue with fill going in, illegal fill being dumped in the back. So, what this $60,000 will do is, in the meantime, the Highway Department has gone up and filled for the winter the portholes and the dangerous, leveled out some of the dangerous walking situation there. And what this article will do is fund, hopefully, it'll fund a complete paving of the parking lot in the front of the building as well as the sides, and take care of the work, the grading and all the leveling and work that needs to be done in the back to conform with the Conservation Commission outstanding complaint that exists at this time.
Are there any other questions or anything on Article 17? All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to call it.
You know you needed two-thirds of the vote.
I need a two-thirds vote.
You've got to count.
So, I'm going to count, just to play safe. We'll do a hand count. Do a hand. Hand, do a hand count. Can the counters please come forward, please? Okay, down this side you two, and on this side the two. All those in favor of Article 17, please raise your hand. All set, Counters?
I don't think they count.
All those who do not want, want to vote no on Article 17, please raise your hand. All those who do not want- want to vote no on Article 17, please raise your hand.
33 to me. Those are 28. It's 100. It's 230. Yep. I always check that with soup. She's got a little bit of soup. Do you have to break your numbers over to soup, please? Suppose I could walk over and pick it up for you. Yeah, we took- going as I said, on to the downstairs. Yeah.
We need a two-thirds vote, and that passes, so Article 17 passes. Article 18.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $208,986 from Article 9 of the April 30th, 2012 Special Town Meeting Community Preservation Fund Development of a Little League Baseball Field at the Bradstreet property to be used by the Board of Selectmen to construct a Little League Field at Veterans Field adjacent to the Pine Grove School and for the construction of a soccer facility at Eris Park and other active recreation facilities at Eris Park, including tennis courts, basketball courts, a skateboard park, and a walking trail.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 18.
The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Yes, just for a brief explanation, and I'm certainly happy to take questions.
At the Special Town Meeting, we appropriated back in 2012, April 30th, we appropriated $225,000 out of the Community Preservation Funds in order to construct an athletic field, baseball field at Bradstreet, the Bradstreet property. The land that was- that field was to be constructed on turned out to be a very poor place. It was difficult terrain to begin with, and the original construction costs were going to be up around $225,000, everything included. Well, this past winter, we've been Chairman Mary and myself and Tim Southall and the town administrator have been meeting with the engineer on the work we've had, survey work and engineering work done on that piece of property. At one of our meetings, the engineer came back and basically said as a result of soil sampling and water table determinations, et cetera, we'd have to level the field, cut into a bank in which we'd probably cut into the water table. The soil there is terrible soil for growing grass, would have to be replaced. It's terrible for drainage, so that we were going to have to bring in all kinds of crushed stone, lay pipes, et cetera, et cetera, and the price given to us was going to be somewhere, and it was a rough price, but somewhere around $227,000 above and beyond the $225,000 that we had already appropriated. So at that point, we went back to the drawing boards and said, well, that's- we felt it was a ridiculous amount of money to spend on a Little League Field. So therefore, we took a look around, and we took a look behind the Pine Grove School, where we currently have a softball field and two soccer fields laid out, and we believe there's enough space there to construct a Little League Field. This Little League Field would replace the Little League Field that's out on Havel Street by- behind the TD Bank, which is in the wellfield area. In addition, it's a very- if you're going by there at night at all when there's games going on, people park at the shopping center and walk down Havel Street, which is a dangerous situation. Most people have young children and little kids running around, so we really want to close that park and get that situation corrected, and we would give that water, that park land or that area would be given back to the wellfield since it sits right beside the wellfield. We could construct the ball field at- behind the Pine Grove School that we call Veterans Field. However, in doing that, we would have to eliminate a current field there that's used for soccer. To accommodate that field, and we need as much field space as we can, as any of you out there that have kids playing sports, you know where field space is a premium. What we're looking at is building up behind in Eris Park, if you stand in front of the police station and look towards the police station and the fields, on the right-hand side is Smith Lane, it's actually the entrance going into the ballpark area. To the right of that is a number of acres of land that's wooded at this time. Part of it is in the wellfield zone, but we'll be looking at in the spring, is subdividing that and putting the part that's in the wellfield zone into the water district, and the remainder number of acres, which is offhand, I think it's about eight or nine acres left, which we would, at the next town meeting, have designated as active recreation space, and we would hope that we could build a soccer field at that location, and it would be- trees coming down, but the land is relatively level, so we're hoping that the cost that we've transferred in here would be enough to cover that. In addition, we'd be looking at possibly putting a skateboard park up there, a tennis court, it really depends on when we get the engineer working, assuming this article passes, we'll be getting back with the engineer and they'll be laying out the fields and what we can fit there. Parking is always a premium up there, so we're hoping to expand the parking spaces that are available in there, and if we have to, there is land out behind that we own as part of Eris Park out behind Circuit Drive that we can use, but we're hoping to be able to use the land by Smith Lane. So anybody that's gone up there and seen the amount of use that these fields get is incredible. And the other good thing about if we can put the Little League Field behind Pine Grove School is, as you well know, in the summertime, when those three baseball fields plus the big league field are being used up there, parking's at a premium. This way here, the Little League diamond would be down behind the school, so it'd kind of separate the parking, and when they're playing soccer up there, there wouldn't really be any baseball going on, so it's a much better use of the area, it makes it a lot easier for parking and a lot safer, so that's what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding Article 18? Yes, come forward, please. State your name and address, please.
My name's John Ennis. I live at Sixth Circuit Drive.
Yep.
I did have some questions regarding especially the Eris Park plan. You did answer some of the questions. Sorry, you did answer some of the questions, but we did have a Special Town Committee a few years back, and we did determine that there wasn't enough land to build just two soccer fields, and that was to the left, and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't trying to use that land, because it was, I think we did look at the grade and how much land there was there, and it was going to cost significantly more than $200,000 to grade that land and use it, and parking was going to be a problem. We do have the survey, and I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to start that and-
You're talking to the left when you're looking at the police station, you're talking behind the police station to the left.
To the left, behind-
And they are talking now Smith's Lane, which goes beyond? Go ahead, you want to clarify?
Yeah, I mean, directly beside the police station, is that the land you're talking about?
Yes, so if you're looking at the police station-
Talking- you got to talk to the microphone.
If you're looking at the police station, the land that we were talking about then was to the left.
Right, no, we're not planning on touching that land at this time. In the event that we build a police and fire station up in that area, we may end up using part of that for police station expansion, but at this time, there's been no determination. But our intent is, for the fields, is to build, if we can build a soccer field to the right of Smith Lane, that's our first choice.
Okay.
If not, a second choice would be out in back of the three baseball, Little League Baseball Diamonds, there's a substantial space there that we would look to build a soccer field out there, and both of those pieces of land are relatively flat, and because with the spot you're talking about, you're right, it has to- would have to be filled and graded and so on and so forth.
That was a 20-foot, that was a 20-foot grade.
Right.
And would put the berm out into the middle of Circuit Drive.
Right, yeah. So, no, you're right, as far as that goes. So our intent is to go on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions regarding Article 18? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 18 passes. Article 19.
Madam Moderator, Article 19, I move the town vote pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter 44B, to transfer and appropriate from the Community Preservation Unreserved Account the amount of $15,000 to be used by the Conservation Commission for costs associated with the granting of a perpetual conservation restriction by the town of Raleigh to be held by the Essex County Green Belt Association, Incorporated, covering all or of a portion of the approximately 193.299 plus or minus acres of land known as the Girl Scout Camp Conservation and Open Space Area at 390 Weathersfield Street as shown on assessors map, 18 Lot 7.
Second.
Finance Committee on Article 19.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article 19? All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 19 passes. Article 20.
Madam Moderator, Article 20, I move the town vote pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter 44B, to transfer the fund balance appropriated in the sum of $13,667.50 from Article 34 of the May 12, 2003 Town Meeting Community Preservation Fund Jewel Mill back to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Resources Reserve.
Finance Committee on Article 20.
Finance Committee recommends this article.
Are there any questions regarding Article 20? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 20 passes.
834.
Okay, that completes the warrant for the Special Town Meeting. I thank you all for coming. We need a motion to adjourn, but I would like to ask everybody that when you do get up, if you fold your chairs, the racks are out in the back, and that will help the janitor to get the school ready. So can I entertain a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to adjourn the October 27, 2014 Special Town Meeting, and thank you, boaters, for coming-
Coming out.
-tonight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
835.